All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our monthly board meeting of the Board of Education at 7:00 on the dot. We have mics back in front of us now like we once did when we were in the community room, so I just want to share with anybody sitting here at the table, turn them on so the green light shows when you're speaking and then turn them off because they are sensitive. But hopefully this means everybody in the audience can hear us and we have a nice crowd tonight, so it's really nice to have everybody with us. I will start the meeting by taking the roll call so that you're familiar with everybody you see in front of you, and I will start with board members and myself. I'm Deborah Schut and I'm the chair. Thage Singh, our vice chair.
Present, Deb.
Jeff Fleischman, our secretary.
Present, thank you.
Jackie Blaia.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Lori Young cannot join us this evening. Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you, Deb.
Liz Summercorn.
Present, thanks.
And Sarah Thompson.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. And our administrators, Dr. Carnamola, our superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Mr. Janini, assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Mr. Medick, our assistant superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Ms. Russo, business manager.
Present, thank you.
And Ms. Sardinskis, our executive assistant to the superintendent and board clerk. Thank you so much. If you would all join me, we'll rise, the flag is behind us, and we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I like to start our meetings by reading our mission statement. It just reminds us all why we are here and the work that we do together. Our mission is to inspire in each student a joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. This is also the perfect segue to our recognition piece. I'm excited to welcome Mr. Phelan Ford, and he's going to introduce four of our coaches.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schut. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tim Phelan, director of athletics here at Avon High School. And tonight, we wanted to recognize four of our varsity coaches for their achievement of achieving 400 career victories during their course of their coaching career. All of them have coached here in Avon for their entire career, and I wanted to take a moment to bring them up here, talk a little bit about them, and acknowledge their achievements here at the high school. First will be our head field hockey coach, Terry Zimmicki. Next will be Jim Murray, our girls varsity soccer coach. Next, John McLaughlin, our varsity wrestling coach. And finally Kurt Burns, our women's volleyball coach. To achieve 400 victories in high school sports is a tremendous achievement itself. To look around the country, not just the state, to have four active coaches in your school district who have that many victories is a feat in itself. I've been blessed to have worked side by side with a few of these coaches when I was a coach here, and the past eight years, I've been able to work with them in a different venue, to see them day in and day out, work with our student athletes, not only in the athletic field, outside, in preparation for college, I could say, and Coach McLaughlin and Coach Murray in the classroom as well. And I know Coach Burns and Coach Zee have coached at other high schools, earned state championships, and have had that impact as well on others. And I could say, I'm very blessed to have coaches who have experience, because I think they can tell you athletics has changed tremendously, not since they've started, which, combined, we have over 30, 25 years, 35 years plus of coaching experience in each level here. But the changes that they endure year in and year out, and how the game has changed, how students have changed, how the responsibilities of what their day in and day out responsibilities are when they come here, it's not easy. I would say you don't see many, that coaches staying around 20, 30 years anymore. And for these four outstanding coaches to be here with us, I'm very lucky, our students are lucky, we're very fortunate to have experienced coaches on our staff, and I think our community has only benefited from them being here. So on behalf of Avon Public Schools, we want to thank you for your service, your dedication to our student athletes, and we wish you all the best continuing forward. Thank you.
Before you sit down, I just want to, don't sit down yet, anybody. I would like to just also add on and applaud you for your victories and for your commitment to our students in Avon. They appreciate it, we appreciate it, it matters, and we know that it rounds out their experience here as students. So we are grateful for you, we would like to recognize you, we have certificates. If you wouldn't mind coming forward, we will shake your hands, and then we will come around this side of the table so we can take a group photo, and the students who have come to celebrate you, we would love it if you joined us for that group photo. Okay? Do you want to call? Coach Jim Murray. Coach John McLaughlin. Congratulations. Thank you. Coach Kurt Burns. Thanks, Kurt. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And Coach Terry Zimmicki. Thank you. Of course. Congratulations. All right, let's go over this way and take a nice picture. If anybody wants to take a picture of this, welcome to come up in the center and grab it as well, so please, don't be shy.
We want to see the students.
Yes.
You're more important than the rest of the bunch.
Can you get it from there, Christine, or do you want to come closer? It truly is a testament to the impact that everybody has had on these students, that the students would show up on the evening after school or after practice and be here, so, thank you. If you came this evening for that purpose, we are not offended if you'd like to excuse yourselves, we are fine with that. All right. Moving along. Can I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's special budget workshop meeting minutes of December 20th, 2022? All right, Jackie moves, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Seven, zero.
Yes. Next, could I please have a motion to approve the Board of Education's regular monthly meeting minutes of December 20th, 2022?
So moved, Deb.
Thank you, Thage, do I have a second? All right, Liz, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously as well. All right, next is our communication from the public. I'm not sure if there's anyone here who would like to speak, we do have a sign up on the table there. If you didn't get a chance to fill it in, if you just want to raise your hand and let me know if you want to come forward. If we are all set, then I will move along. We do have a second one later in the meeting. Next is our items of information proposals. We have our student representatives here, Charlotte and Lillian. I don't know if you have a preference for who goes first.
Yes, please, Ms. Schut. Yep. Okay, so first, I'm going to talk about Avon High School. This week is the beginning of our midterm, starting Thursday and continuing into next Tuesday. During lunch, I know students have been enjoying the Zen Den, which is open for all students to relax during all their lunch waves. There's crafts and games, and you can eat while you hang out with friends. In addition, spring sports registration has begun, and seniors have started to learn CPR and first aid skills in their senior wellness class. In addition, there's been many school fundraisers for the class officers, from freshmen all the way to seniors. Next, there's Avon Middle School, and they have been relaunching an enrichment program, which they call Feed Your Curiosity, where speakers come. The seventh grade science classes are continuing their experimentation on plant growth, and in eighth grade, they're working on creating their own movie trailers and other technology platforms. The wellness classes are looking forward to being back in the ropes course, which I know most people in my grade have enjoyed in their past years, and they have been beginning intermurals on Tuesdays and Thursdays for basketball. Lastly, there's Thompson Brook Elementary School. The Student Council has raised over $300 for Dog Star Rescue. The students are eager to begin their next ELA unit, which is journalism, and Music and Sables are looking forward to their upcoming winter concerts on January 25th and January 26th.
All right, so for Roaring Brook School, they enjoyed a December all-school assembly where they were able to get together and set out their new word of the month, which was Thinking Flexibly. RBS has a new story walk set up, and it's based off of the story The Mitten, and that's right in the school's backyard. And then on Friday the 13th, they had a professional development day, and the whole faculty were able to look at executive functioning skills and advance their knowledge of the science of reading. For Pine Grove, they have mid-year universal assessments for all students, and on Friday they had a professional development day as well. They did the same thing about the data team processing and the science of reading. And then finally, they have piney paws, which I understand are kind of like student points, and when they fulfill these points, they got 400 of them, they're going to be doing a school-wide celebration.
Thank you, ladies. It's fun to hear what's going on in each of the buildings, I appreciate that. Next is our financial report, Ms. Russo.
Good evening. We do not have financials to report this month, we'll be reporting next month.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We're covering the budget, we've got plenty to talk about then. All right, committee reports, curriculum and professional practices, Jackie.
Lori, our Valentine's Day meeting, we're rescheduled.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. Finance, Lynn.
Yes, we did not have a meeting this month, but we've rescheduled our next meeting to meet earlier. We'll be meeting at 5:30 instead of 6:00, and that will be February 7th. And we've had, of course, budget workshop in the interim.
All right, thank you. Next is negotiations, that would be me. There was an initial meeting that is being set up with the board attorney and the administrative assistants to set ground rules in February, but board members don't have to participate in that session, so we will be beginning with them after that. Next is policy, we don't have Laura, but Thage is going to give a brief update.
Yeah. We did not meet in January, but the next meeting is scheduled for February 7th at 6:00.
Okay, thank you. Our liaison report, Capital Region Education Council, Jackie.
Meeting is tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you. Next is the chair report, and I don't have anything really to announce, I'm just really grateful for how smoothly the year seems to be going, the effort that all the staff, the teachers are putting in. I'm always grateful that the administrators join us, it's nice to see you regularly, it's just really nice to connect with you in that regard, and all the effort that went into creating this budget, I'm excited for us to approve it and move it forward, so thank you. All right, superintendent's report, Dr. Carnamola.
Sorry, forgetting we don't have the microphone. Thank you. So we'll start with the hiring report, I believe that we might be missing a page of this in the packet, but Mr. Medick can speak to it nonetheless.
Good evening. Our apologies for the omission of the report. I am pleased to welcome Ms. Natasha Davis, who is our new grade four teacher at Pine Grove School, she'll be replacing Julia Miller, who left us just prior to the winter recess. In addition, we have finalized a hire for a school social worker here at the high school. Ms. Olivia Barnes will be joining us on January 30th. And in addition, we had no retirements this month, and we had no transfers. We did receive a resignation from Ms. Tracy Protsch, grade one teacher at Roaring Brook School, and we will be finalizing replacement for Ms. Protsch this week. And that's all for our hiring report for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Medick. I think we spoke a bit about it at the last budget workshop also. We are looking forward to a number of, not looking forward to excitedly, but looking in the future to a number of leaves of certified and non-certified staff, medical leaves, child rearing leaves, and so on. I think we've discussed that a bit already, we'll have some updates about that as we move on, and we look for short-term and long-term substitutes to cover individuals who we are already notified of needing leaves. On the enrollment report, not significant differences from the last month, as you can see, we are six students, more than we were at the same time last year, which brings us to an even 3,100 as of the time that this report was printed. On the strategic plan update, I'll keep that brief tonight, given.
I have several questions.
Yes, sorry.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
So does this include the choice points on, I know typically you don't, I just don't see it.
On the strategic plan update, I'll keep that brief this evening because it's directly connected back to the budget, as we've spoken about also, speak more to that then. One thing related, however, we had a professional development day on Friday, I think you heard some of that also from Charlotte and Lillian, and that was for all district staff, certified and non-certified. The day, we had broken up into two parts. The first was a blend of curriculum development and vertical alignment, you know, we've used that word here before to mean as we move from grade level to grade level, ensuring that curriculum, instruction, and assessment are aligned from one grade to another, so from kindergarten to one, from one to two, and onward through the school districts, so that we build a progression of knowledge and skills with students. So we did that in the first part of the day, and also in the second part, we had building-based professional development sessions that were led by our principals. I'd like to thank Mr. Janini and Jody Elizabeth, our curriculum specialists, and all of our principals, who did a great job in organizing this PD. As you know, we've been moving forward some new ideas this year as a result of some of our discussions with our professional practices and development councils, so I'm glad to be able to say I think it went very well, and of course, we're just continuing to look for ways to improve it, so thank you again. And other than that, I will save any other update for when we discuss the calendar and the budget. Also, I have one thing to ask of the board, under the consent calendar, we had a field trip listed under item A, so this is room number, Roman numeral 11, and then subset A. I'd ask you to remove that from the consent calendar, because our team was actually unable to secure tickets to the squash tournament. And so we were approving this in advance, so that they were allowed to do it, but as it turns out, they're not able to go.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions about the second item on consent calendar, or I will accept a motion to approve the consent calendar with item A removed?
So moved, Deb.
Okay, Thage moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep. Yes, passes unanimously, and it looks like an amazing experience, I'm really thrilled that the students can get back to these trips where they get to perform, so I think that'll be fabulous, so I'm glad to see that back on the consent calendar. Next, we are at new business with the superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you. Christine will pull that up for us. I'm just going to, we don't have our table, but I'm still going to move out to the side here. I think we've gotten used to doing this loud enough, but I'll take it, because we're excited about our new technology. Should have said that under the updates, thank you to Elizabeth, Tom, and the team for making this work for us. And here, as you know, we wanted to be able to stay in the library with the number of people that have been coming out for the meetings and so on, and especially like tonight with the recognition, so I appreciate you making this work for us. And Brian Daly, who might be somewhere floating around, who had the setup and last-minute find of the second Ben Q board, thank you again. So nothing in here for the board or our administrators, or anyone who's been here with both of our last budget workshops, our last board meeting, but in a different format than we've talked about, because we're at the point where we're not going through this as a workshop experience anymore. The board has done that, we've gone through the binders, we've sat together and gone through the numbers and the priorities and so on. However, this is the soup-to-nuts overview presentation that, the way that I like to think about this as we move forward, is that it is the document that could stand alone, so to speak, with more detail in the line-by-lines for anyone who would want to know that, or who comes out to the meeting to hear what we're talking about, either here or one of the public hearings or so on, but this will become a part of the public document, once it is submitted to the town, if and when the board approves it and adopts it as your budget, as a result of the work that we've done together. So Christine, if you could, of course, we already heard our mission statement tonight from Ms. Schut. We always just put a few of our highlights up, thinking about, this is a combination of taxpayer money, federal money, state money, what do we do with the funds that we are granted? And I like to think about that in part in terms of the accomplishments of the school district. Obviously, we could do a booklet on that alone, gratefully, with the faculty, staff, the students, and the administrators that we have, but these are just a few of the highlights from the schools. I think you've met the national merit finalists that we had at a previous meeting, and the students who were commended as possible finalists also. These are very exciting for us, because you don't see this in a lot of school districts, and I like to think of it as a culmination of what a student has been able to do over the course of their career, and learn and grow both in school and at home. Ninety-two percent of our last year's class went on to post-secondary education, meaning a two- or four-year college/university experience. Other 8%, we have a combination between gap years, military, and I believe we had two students, if I remember correctly, who left and went directly to work. So you think about that in terms of big picture, I think that says a lot about the success of our students, their families, and the school system as a whole. Seven students we had named, you saw some of our athletes here tonight, to the Fall Allstate and the 17th, the All Conference. Boys tennis won the state championship this year, Pine Grove celebrated its 30th anniversary, that was a shindig. We are still having the shindig of celebrating the 20th anniversary of Thompson Brook, as you know, opened our time capsule and so on, it's been a lot of excitement. And our AMES robotics team competed in the Nationals this past spring. So just a few of the highlights of what we've done since we were talking about a budget in the previous year. As we talked about last year, I mean, excuse me, feels like last year, it's last week, at the workshop, we are talking about a net increase of 2.86% over last year's budget, and a gross, because we talked about what the grossed-up budget means, of 3.71%, which includes the school district acting as the quote "tax collector" as Susan coined it for us all. One more for me, please. Thank you. So we've talked quite a bit about the budget process. The budget process starts for us about two weeks before the budget for the current year, even for the coming year, is passed, so this started for us probably about this time last year, as a school district, looking forward again to another year. But we've had a number of meetings as administrators, with department leaders, with teacher leaders in the buildings, with department heads, and also, of course, forward to our Board of Education, we've started working directly with this budget in December. We've talked about a number of things here, but the numbers started to align in December, and we had our last workshop in last week. What I will say, Susan, our OPED number is still not solidified yet, it wasn't when we came last week, it still is not, nonetheless, as you'll see, we are moving forward with the projection that we have. So move forward for me, please, Christine. Just of note, this is the last time we discuss this budget as a board, unless moving forward changes are needed. So the board takes action on this budget tonight, either to pass it as we've last discussed, that we're going to talk about again right now, or to make changes, and from there, it gets submitted to the town. It has to be to the town by February 3rd, which means there's quite a bit of work that we do on the back end after tonight, to make sure that we get all of the right documentation to the town, and then the town council has a budget workshop, sorry, I think, yes, it's the town council, right, on the 4th, on the 4th, on Saturday. So we have this to them by Friday, and then the town talks about the budget as a whole on Saturday. So back to our strategic plan, which we call our Blueprint for Excellence. As you know, we have four focus areas that are in our board-approved plan, student learning, of course, being our main concern and goal, and what I say we're in the business of, personal growth and relationships, as that relates to supporting our students to do the best that they can academically and socially. Communication and partnerships, trying to do some of what you've seen us doing here again tonight, that's another, our partnerships with our community extends well beyond sports and the college experiences that we provide students, but just as a whole, how are we continually communicating with our community, taking the feedback from our community, and developing the kinds of partnerships that we need to have for our students to be successful? And of course, systems is a given, that we are always looking for how to better our systems. So, go ahead, Christine. I bring those up again because we talk about needing everything we do to be driven by that mission and the strategic plan. So everything that we talk about in this budget is a necessity for one reason or another, or a combination of both. Having the lights on is a necessity to running a school district, but making sure that we are meeting student needs and providing them with opportunities and growth is the other direct need that's tied back to those budgetary goals, to those district goals that feed into the budget. So you've seen them in this way before, at our first workshop, I divided up what we were talking about in this budget by tying it directly back to the focus areas. So we have the technology teacher that we are adding into, combined between here and the middle school, that will be a split position between high school and the middle school, .6 here, .4 there, for one full-time. We have the certified math specialist that we are looking forward to provide additional support to our students at the high school and the middle school, again, a split position in tandem with our current method of a math lab here with a TA at the, I'm sorry, yes, yes, a tutor, excuse me, get my terms correct, with an interventionist here at the high school, and a theater arts teacher, which we already have on staff, as a .6, we are moving that to a full-time, which will help us increase the offerings both here and at the middle school, and balance out that technology piece that we are adding in the schedule at the middle school. And three paraeducators, which, remember, we have already in the budget, not in the budget that was approved, but we are living with that in the current budget based on student needs, and we need to maintain those additional three positions as we move forward next year. Those are all out of the general fund, you know, this is not something that we talked about even in the workshop, but I wanted to point it out again, because we have talked about this in the past, and I want to be clear about the ways that we use federal and state funds to continue driving our instruction and our student growth and meeting student needs. IDEAs, federal grant funding related to Individuals with Disabilities Act, you might remember, we added in a pre-K section last year, we've maintained that, we are going to maintain it again as we move forward, that was in the grant, it's an additional pre-K teacher, and also two pre-K paraeducators that we are maintaining. So it's not a part of local funding, but nonetheless, I think it's important that you know about it, that we are continuing that. Related to personal growth and relationships, we have partnered with the police department and the town, as you know, to pick up 50% of the cost of an additional officer. To be clear, we have an SRO at present, he is funded fully by the town, so really, we are getting two officers for the price of .5. So I'm very grateful for the partnership with the town to be able to do that, which is going to be a help to both our current SRO and us as a school district, and also to the police department, frankly, because when they do need to send additional officers here on a regular basis, that means that they don't have them available. here on a regular basis, that means that they don't have them available at their disposal. And so I know we have some folks sitting in the audience that may not have been here at other times or that might watch this later on, on television, who say, well, what does that mean, that calling the police to the schools all the time? No, that means in a school resource officer, working with students, working with families, there's a lot that happens between home visits, partnerships with the Department of Children and Families, social work contingencies. There are a number of ways that a school resource officer, you know, that we continue to use. And the primary piece has nothing to do, generally speaking, with student arrests or things that are criminal in schools. It's actually the opposite, generally speaking. When there is an issue that might require the police department, it is typically not the school resource officer that deals with the issue. And the reason for that is school resource officers considered more community policing than they are a piece of the law enforcement angle. They're always law enforcement. But when they are here with us, they are more school staff and here to develop connections between students, staff, and families. Back to, this is for an example of many of these items stretch over different pieces of our strategic plan because we could just as easily take this from personal growth and relationships and we could put it in to community partnerships, for example. Go ahead, Christine. The school counselor, we already added in. This is another example of, we've had this, this is the second year that we have had this, that we're here in, in high school. We were utilizing ESER funds. This was a perfect use of that money at the time. We talked about that. We also knew that in this coming year, 2023-24, that position would have to go into local funding because the funding from the grant is running out. But we tried to use that funding very judiciously, remember, and not put many salaries on it. However, we also wanted to ensure that we were able to make use of the maximum amount that we could get for the Town of Avon under ESER. And utilizing the funds for this salary was a part of that. But now it has to be transitioned to our local budget. Safety and security specialists, you know, we've already hired that individual. We put that position in. We've hired the individual. They are already working with us. That is also grant-funded, and we are looking to maintain it moving forward into the 2023-24 Internship coordinator, we, again, we have that person working on staff. That was a position in the past that we did not refill during the time of the pandemic when we did not have as many internships. And now we have revitalized that program. As you already know, that's going very well. Very excited. And of course, we want to keep moving forward with that position and the individual in that position. Unified sports, we began two years ago, I believe. Tim's left me, but I believe it's two years ago that we added that in. And this is one more sport that we are adding moving forward. Unified sports, again, being an opportunity for some of our disabled students who may not otherwise play on a mainstream sports team to be able to play with their peers. Esports, a new sport that has been added in and recognized by the CIAC and nationally as athletic conferences. Many students playing, many students going to college with scholarships related to esports. This was new for me also, as you know, when we had this conversation, but we have had students here participating in it already. And this is solidifying that our school will participate and have a coach and an assistant coach like we would other sports. Again, one more piece with unified sports, as I said, we added it in two years ago. We utilized grant funds, and this is the year, IDEA grant funds, but this is the year we are taking that back into the general budget. We piloted it first, and obviously, it went very well. We've had a lot of interest in it, so we are moving that back into our general fund. Now, under systems, this is where a lot of the increase, as you know, comes this year. We're talking about a significant increase in health insurance. Nearly a percent of the budget of the overall increase that we're talking about this year is related to insurance, health insurance specifically. Our pension number has, on the other hand, gone down. That's a result of favorable fund performance, like we talked about at the last workshop, and also less utilization. So we are contributing less. OPEB, we are still waiting for the numbers, but it is an increase. Utilities, we've talked about this. We're all facing this at home. We're facing it in the school district. We're facing it commercially and industrial also. We have an 8.41 increase projected for the 2023-24 year. That's certainly a budget driver in terms of water, telephone, telecommunications, natural gas, heating oil. None of them have gone down. They have all gone up. So just to be able to show this in a different way, we talked about this last time also, just under 80% of our total budget is salaries, which makes sense, and benefits, actually. Salary and benefits, the majority of a school district is people, working with students. These, to be clear, are the percentages of the overall budget. They're not the increase, they are the percentages. So 79.79% of our budget is salary and benefits. Just under 6% is tuition. We talked about this. What is a public school district paying tuition? These are typically one of two types of tuition. One is an outplacement for a student with special needs that cannot be met within the traditional school district setting. And the other is for magnet school tuitions. We've done well with seeing a decrease in magnet school tuition and more of our students staying with us, which, of course, we're always happy about. On the other hand, the tuition costs everywhere are rising because other districts and schools are doing the same thing that we are doing and trying to recap losses. So we're in a typical, because of the rising cost of utilities and insurance and other things. So in a typical year, we might budget for a 3% increase, say, in outplacements. And this year, in some places, we're looking more at a 6%. Let me pause for a second. Any questions about this? I know that we've all talked about this already, but I just want to make sure before I move on. Jeff?
My last question.
Yep.
I know we're still waiting on the OPEB numbers. When we talk about an increase, are we talking $1,000, $100,000? Do you have a ballpark how much more it'll add?
I'll just make that correction. It's actually net zero right now. We budget net zero. It looks favorable based on what our pension numbers have been, and we were very conservative in planning for OPEB two years ago. When I first started, we moved our rate down to be more conservative for what our projected return on investment was. So the valuation folk today told me that they wouldn't have it for another four weeks, but they didn't foresee a significant change from what they've already told us.
So it's not going to be a major shift one way or the other for us?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's what we're going with right now, based on the information they've given us, correct. Anything else? Okay. Go ahead. Well, and I, that is an example of what I started the presentation by saying, we're, we have to be looking one, two, and five years ahead every year that we put a budget So this is just looking at it in a different way. This is the overall budget increase being a gross of 3.71. What constitutes that? What percentages of these things add up to that 3.71? So you see salaries are 2.3% of the increase. Benefits are 1.1%. So again, remember, we're talking about the health insurance there. The tuition looks significant when you see it in the other breakdown, when you see it in the big picture, it's .05% of the overall increase. And then they go down from there. And of course, some of them, we actually have been able to decrease. So we have negative impact from a decrease on contracted services. We've made a zero impact on supplies and equipment. That's a result, as we talked about last time, of doing a lot of work going through the supplies and equipment that we have and making sure that we would have what we needed next year, if that meant, in some ways, changing the years that we bought things, pre-buying things with grant money at the end of last year. We were working very hard for this line not to be one of the drivers pushing the costs up this year. All other at .05%, $29,722. And we land at $2.388, $2.05 million increase, which is 3.71% gross. I think in the big scheme of things, as we talked about last year, when we are talking about 2.3% being the increase in salaries and we are, portion being of the increase being in salaries, and we are able to get what we are out of the additional positions that we're putting in because we have talked already about trying to recoup money to be able to pay for the newer things that we need by reallocating staff, by utilizing retirements where we can possibly not fill a position, for example, but use that position to do something else. I just wanted to point out, I think, and I think you said the same, some of you, if not all of you, last time, it's very significant that we are looking at a budget that we are at a 2.3% salary increase based on contractual obligations alone, never mind what other positions we might have needed to add in. So I, again, want to thank all of the work that went into this behind the scenes from negotiating contracts to filling positions when we've hired people, to the team, having a lot of conversations about how to best utilize this faculty and the staff that we have. That's how we landed here. Any questions about this? Does this make sense to you, what we're looking at on the percentage? So again, just another way to look at it. Some people are chart-and-grab people. You know, that's not me, but that is Susan, and that's, I know, some of you. So makes it easier to see the big picture. This, again, when you look at drivers, so to speak, what is having the impact on the budget in terms of the overall increase, it's just a different way of looking at it.
Great question, just from my understanding, because numbers. What this is, is just showing us, if we look at the total increase, this is a breakdown of what makes that increase.
Yes.
So it is 62% of our 2.3 million increase is salaries.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. So 1.48 million dollars is 62% of the overall 2.388 million dollars.
Gotcha.
So versus the other, if you go back one slide for me. This is the percentage increase of the, the overall increase is 3.71. How much of that is each of these things? So 2.3% of that 3.71 is salaries. It's just a different way of looking at it. This is percent, that's dollars. And I know, again, we've talked about this quite a bit, so I don't want to belabor any points or anything else that you think that for the order of the order, maybe we should talk about or I should answer again, given the audience.
Well, first, I'm praying that the camera was not on me when I choked on my Tic Tac in such an ungracious way, so forgive me for that. I guess what I would want to say, really, not to Bridget or to any of us, because I think we've seen the budget, but to the public who's going to be thinking about this, is that I've been really truly moved and felt so grateful for the last couple of years to see these budgets that really are meeting our students' needs in the most impactful way. I think we're really talking about emotional connections for students, for opportunities for learning and support outside of academics. And I'm just really, I think every building now has a really robust team of, like a safety net for our students. And I'm really grateful for that. And I just want, I know the public thinks about that a lot, and I, as a parent, have thought about that a lot. So I'm really excited about this budget and grateful for all the work that everybody has done, and I know that Bridget has done and all of you have done. So I think as a community, we're really grateful for our kids that we have something like this to present and to vote on.
Thank you, Jackie. Anybody else?
Did I miss any? Look at my team. Did I miss anything? Misspeak? Never know. You would, you might tell me later anyway, but I, but I can see in your faces whether or not I did.
That's very impressive. It's really incredible to be able to bring this to the town and feel just so confident in all the efforts and the integrity of it and the confidence that the town has in us and the work that we do. And that's because of you, Bridget, and your team. So we appreciate that. All right. Barring any other questions or comments, I'm going to extend the opportunity to Lynn as the Finance Chair. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I would love to.
Okay.
And I move to...
You can read it right off of, so it's that much easier.
Where would it be?
It's under New Business.
New Business.
It says the number that you need to read into the record. Do you not have that one? I will give it to you.
Oh, it's the annotated, maybe? You know what? It's on my printer at home, annotated. It's very safe. Thank you.
Right there, motion.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the superintendent's proposed 2023-2024 budget in the amount of $66,743,809, a gross increase of 3.71% over the prior fiscal year.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Passes unanimously, so round of applause. And now you get to start the next one, so thank you. But thank you. That's a lot of work. We know it, and we want the community to know that as well.
Thank you.
All right. Next new item is our 2023-2024 Avon Public Schools calendar, which is popular as well.
So generally speaking, there are not a lot of changes here of impact, on the one hand. And on the other hand, we think some of the changes that we have made will be impactful for both us as a school district and our faculty and staff and also our students as the recipients of. So you might remember that when we had to reopen, when we wanted to reopen, I should say, actually, in 2000, the fall of 2020, we were required to submit a plan to the state of Connecticut that allowed for a transition back into full-time in-person learning for the students that were returning. As a part of that, one of the things we had to be prepared to do, if we were told that it was necessary at any point, was to move from full in-person to hybrid learning. One of the ways that we accomplished that in the fall of 2020 is by starting the, at the beginning of the school year, as half-days, and also rotating students in and out so that if we ever had to go to that schedule, they would know, you know, on day one, it's this portion of the alphabet in these grades that come, and day two, it's that. And so we did that in 2020 as a requirement. In 2021, 2022, we kept it as a way to still meet the requirement. Moving forward, we want to do away with the half-days at the beginning of the school year. So our first two days, you might remember, for students were half-days. There were benefits to having them here for half-days, surely, particularly when we're talking about some of the younger students in kindergarten, first grade, second grade. It's certainly easier to start a school year in a half-day and get into a routine and allow teachers and staff to work with students in a different way. But on the other hand, we also know that there's a loss to instructional time at, over the course of the year, when you're talking about the 180 days. And we're talking about upfront, in the beginning days, that's a little bit more difficult and more difficult for parents, too. So that was a lot of what we considered when we talked about this, when we talked with staff and parents. It's not necessary for us to do anymore. We could have chosen to do it. General consensus was to eliminate doing it and allow our students to come back full days. On the flip side, if you look at the first week of school, our students would be returning on Tuesday instead of Monday. That allows us primarily to move one of our full-time professional development days, that is usually later on in the school year, to the beginning of the school year. We've talked about this. I can't say if we talked about this before my time here, but I know we've talked about it since I began. but I know we've talked about it since I began. And each year, we've had conversations, we haven't seen before this calendar was developed, and just never quite came to the place where we were comfortable recommending it and moving the days forward, knowing how we would utilize them. Contractual changes that had to change with some of our bargaining units that would allow more of our staff to be with us at the beginning of the school year. I think from a philosophical standpoint, where I would stand on it, and I know that our team does as a whole, is those beginning days with our faculty and staff are some of the most important ones that we have to prepare for the school year. And having only had two days in the past, one is by contract what is called a teacher workday, which allows our teachers to ensure that everything is set up in their rooms, that they are ready for students to arrive the following day, time to go through individual student plans, 504 systems plans, and so on, and just be ready for the next day for when students come. Because typically, it's the day before students come. However, that leaves us with only one other day. And I think you've seen as a number of the policies that I've had to bring to you every year that are updated continually with legislation and new requirements, and even just changes that we would like to make for the better in the school district. One day to do that before the school year starts with everyone here is not enough. So what we are recommending you approve in this calendar is that we have the three days that we would like to have in this coming summer, this coming August, with staff, teachers, I'm sorry, excuse me. Students then start on Tuesday, and they have a four-day week, which also, I think, is helpful on the student end. So we think about, we're not talking about half-days anymore, but we're talking about a four-day week before they go away for Labor Day weekend. I think that also makes it a little bit easier of a transition for the students. Not that they can't do five days, but I think it might be helpful. And what that will mean is that we do not have, so we just talked to you about the professional learning day that we had in last Friday in January. Sorry, I have the wrong, I have the wrong calendar in front of me. It just scurched me. Excuse me. I'm looking at 22, 23, thinking, why is this not what I know? So I'm explaining it. We have removed the January professional learning day. We had a full day, obviously. We just had it this Friday. That is the one we chose to remove and utilize at the beginning of the school year. We are leaving the other one in March, because that is a good time as you come close to the end of the year. Where are we? Where, what else do we need to do before this year is over? And how do we start preparing for the coming year? March is a good time for us to do that. And it's also a month without other interruptions. We were thinking a lot about what it looks like in terms of holidays, what it looks like in terms of other times that students are in and out. The other, of course, we are leaving Election Day as a professional development day, because we cannot have students here on that day. Our Thanksgiving recess remains the same. Our winter recess remains the same. It looks a little shorter even this coming year than it did last year. I know it's not going to make a lot of folks happy. It's just, it's just the way the calendar falls, folks. Not much I could do about that. I didn't have a lot of time to cook myself before people were at the house. It doesn't look like it's getting any better. However, one of the other things, someone asked me about this, so I wanted to mention it. Diwali is not on this calendar as a day off, as a holiday. And you know that, that the board voted to observe that holiday in our calendar. Last year, for the current year, based on the number of students we have in the district at the time that celebrate. However, it is a, it is a holiday that is observed on the day. There is not another day of observance. It's, it's a multiple day, but the main day this year is on a Sunday. And that's why you don't see it as a day off, because it's not observed on another day.
Something pumped out in me. I just, I have no problem with it, because everyone needs time for cooking as well. But I also noticed Rosh Hashanah is, begins in the evening of the 15th. It starts in the evening. So was that intentional to have the day off, even though it doesn't start until later that day? I'm sorry, I didn't notice that before.
No, that's, that's okay. We, this.
When I have the paper in front of me, and they come the day, so that's the day that.
So this is what we.
That's what the day that I have a sheet that.
This is the draft. So one of the things we always talk about is, do we have the holidays right when we come here? So it does, I believe you're right. It begins at sundown on the 15th, right? Okay. So we can make that, we can make that change, because that would be on the 16th, then, correct?
But the 16th is the weekend?
Yes.
So does that mean we're not taking?
Yes. That would mean, that would mean that we did not have that day off. Right.
Unless you needed another professional development day. I don't, I'm, I'm serious about that, though. I don't, I think compared to other districts, we're kind of low in the number of PD days.
We are, in some ways, which will bring me to talking about the half-days. On the other hand, we, our number of days with students by contract is 180. And the state, as you know, requires 180. So I can't add that professional development day in, because I would, we would not have, like, we wouldn't be in compliance with our contract. If I had the students stay home, I understand what you're saying, I would have to take a PD day from somewhere else.
So even though, I'm just saying swap the holiday, the 15th, with either a school or a professional development day.
But, so our teachers, for example, our certified staff, if Rosh Hashanah is a holiday, they don't work on that day either. That's a holiday for students and faculty. And so if we said, let's have a professional development day, we would be adding a workday onto the teacher contract. So thank you for pointing that out. That's obviously, this is the first year that Christine is, is doing this calendar. And that Rosh Hashanah is one of the holidays that sometimes we have to have a conversation about here to determine, making sure that we have the right date. She just finished putting this together.
So are you saying that the Rosh Hashanah would come off?
Yes. So we would go back one day? Yes. Yes. So Rosh Hashanah would come off.
Because it's not Rosh Hashanah.
Right. Right. Correct. Because it's actually the next day.
We are not removing Rosh Hashanah from the approved calendar.
No, yes, let's be clear. It would come off as a holiday, yes.
Is not actually Rosh Hashanah until Friday evening at sundown. So technically, most school districts will observe Rosh Hashanah as the full day, which would have been on Saturday, the 16th.
Right. Just, just like Diwali. It's not, it is observed on the actual.
If it fell during the workday, the workweek, we would have it off.
Right.
But then it's adding a day.
Yes.
Yeah.
So to your point.
No. So what will happen is, the last day of school will be one day sooner than it shows on this calendar. We will remove, yes, we will remove that as a day off, not remove Rosh Hashanah as a holiday. But we will remove that.
No, we keep Rosh Hashanah. Very important.
We're not, we're not here to make a ruckus tonight. So.
We move Diwali, we move Rosh Hashanah.
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted to be very clear as I explained it about Diwali.
Next, we're all working Christmas.
The next thing you know, I'm fired.
Can I ask? January 23rd is listed as a half-day early dismissal, but it's not listed below. It's colored in yellow?
Yes. So one of the things that, we haven't gotten there yet. No, no, that's okay. I just want to make sure that no one sees any other issue with the days, because we just drafted this. Before we came to this meeting, we wanted to at least talk about it tonight, whether or not we put it through tonight.
So the only other commentary I'll add, because I always look, in the last couple of years, Passover's always fallen over April break. This year, it falls on April 22nd and 23rd. While that traditionally is not a holiday we see taken off, and I understand the Jewish population in town is not tremendously large, it's one that I know I take off. And I was just questioning, because it always comes in relation to the April break. Over the last couple of years, our April break has kind of moved week to week, and it always just encompasses both Easter and Passover. This year, because of where those holidays land, that can't happen. Easter's real early. Passover's really late.
Right.
I'm just putting it out there in terms of, maybe you can talk about the placement of the April vacation, because that's always a topic of conversation. And then I just put the notation about the Passover.
And we, you're right, we've talked about that every year. And we left it this year, the same week, this 23, 24, that it is in 21, 22, in part because, I remember years ago, when the state tried to make school districts come up with a regional calendar where we would all be the same, didn't necessarily work that well. But one of the things that we do still consider is, at least in, in a region, to try to stick to the same. And one of the things we did before we drafted this to bring it tonight was look at where else was having the same conversation. And I made some phone calls to the superintendents, if they had not already had the public conversation about the calendar, to try to see if in the greater Farmington Valley area, this was the week, and this is the week. And one of the reasons that that makes a difference to us is related also to childcare issues and staffing and so on. Because if we, the majority, not all, but the majority of our faculty and staff lives in this greater area. If they're not in Avon, they're, they're somewhere in a surrounding town. And if we have a different calendar week off, we would see significant issues related to absenteeism with faculty and staff whose children are off a different week. That's, that's one way to look at it. We have just consistently stuck with just the, quote, "regional calendar" idea as a local area.
And you're going to address the half-days, so I won't ask any more questions about those.
Yes. I just want to make sure on the other days. So Christine, can you make sure? And I apologize for that, that oversight on Rosh Hashanah. I don't know why it's coming up as that. Because we do know it begins at sundown, so I'm not sure how that came up on the calendar the way that it did as we looked forward. But we will take off the no-school on the 15th. We will move back the tentative last day to June 9th.
Or 7th.
I'm sorry, because that's a holiday, June 7th? That would be wonderful, but that's not what's actually going to happen. No one get excited, of course. It's not going to be on Friday. Okay.
I have a question about Rosh Hashanah.
Go ahead.
So what happens to, like, student athletes? Are games going to be played that day? Or what, like, what happens?
So after sundown, you mean on, on Rosh Hashanah, for example? This is a conversation that we've had a number of times with the high school and with athletics. It, I guess my, the answer I have for you, honestly, is it depends. Because they, it depends on what other schools are still willing to play, whether or not students are, on a team, are observing that holiday. They're not going to be required to come and play, certainly if they're observing the holiday. So the coaches, the athletic department, go by the players on the team and/or whom else they might be playing. Because, for example, maybe all of our athletes on X varsity team are not celebrating Rosh Hashanah, so they can play that night. Maybe they're coaches. Maybe the other team has the majority of students who would not be playing, then the game's not going to happen. Similarly, with faculty and staff who celebrate holidays that we don't have off, they utilize a personal day, and it's granted because it is a holiday they celebrate. With a student, it's an excused absence. So prior to the board voting to add Diwali into the calendar as a recognized holiday, for example, when students were not here on that day, it was an excused absence. And it was also considered in terms of homework and exams and so on in the school district by our policy as a holiday celebrated. So on the half-day piece, you mentioned, I think, Lynn, the fact that when we think about in comparison to a number of other school districts in the area, if not in the state, we don't see really a comparison between the number of full and/or half. And I would say many more school districts employ more half-days for professional development, in whatever that looks like. Professional development is a blanket term. It might mean that there's training of some kind going on, that there's an, there's actual training. It might mean that there's work being done to look at new procedures or on our curriculum instruction and assessment, or any number of other things that present themselves, again, thinking about the legislation and how often we might have to stop and take a little bit of a left turn and say, okay, we've got to retrain folks in X as a result of whatever just happened. Or just even allow our faculty and staff to have additional time to work to implement some of the learning that they have, they have gotten. So we're trained in X. When do we have the opportunity to sit together and to plan out what that will look like? So any number of those things are what we would use a professional development day for. We historically have not utilized many half-days in the district to do that. And again, some of this is philosophy, related to, what are you doing with those days? How many minutes or hours do, do teachers need for certification? Is that all you're basing it on, that you meet whatever that, you know, the state statute is for that, for that year, if it changes, or someone maybe needs more hours one year than another? But that's not the only thing to be done on one of these days, as we know. So we had that conversation as a team. We've had that feedback from our faculty and staff over at least the last few years that I have been here, asking for time that was not necessarily a full day, because it allows a different type of momentum, I think, to, to the learning, that if you look on the calendar, we're able to, to add more in over the course of the year. So we're not just talking about, okay, we have these three days that all faculty and staff are here in August, and then we have another day on, in November, and then we have another day in January, and then we have another day in March. And whatever it is that had to be done, we better make sure it gets done in those days. And it's almost never the case. People are always asking for additional time to work with each other in their teams, to apply the learning, to have additional training in something. And so we said, why don't we make this the year that we bring a calendar that represents what we think we actually need as a school district in this way? And I talked a little bit about, when you're saying you saw some of the comparisons, what it looked like in other school districts, just as a, as a different vantage point for you as a board, because we haven't ever talked about this during the time that I've been here. And to be honest, I'm not certain that it's been talked. And just you would know this better than I have as an administrator that's been here longer than I have. I don't know that we've ever talked about this with the board prior to my time, not in recent years. So as I said earlier, the majority of school districts have full PD days, but also half-days. So just to give you some examples, Simsbury has four full days and eight half-days. We have four full days right now, before this calendar. West Hartford has three full days, and every Wednesday is, as I know, some of you know, is an abbreviated day. Not even sure how many that turns out to be. It might be 30 or something over the course of the school year.
Okay, but they're not a whole half-day. They're just a short, a shortened day.
Yeah. It adds up to like a day.
Still-
In a month.
Yeah. It adds up to like about a day in a month, yeah. And then that's not, that's not that unusual. It just depends on the context, yes. Farmington has five full days and eight half-days. Canton has three full and three half. And Grandby has six full and two half. So you see, we're in the, we are, as we proposed this to you tonight, we're in the ballpark of, of being in somewhere on the playing field, I would say, with what it looks like in other school districts. What's the downside to this, if, if you will? Because of course, there are, there are pluses and minuses to everything. One of the things we always think about is this means childcare differences for, for parents, particularly with younger students, right? If they, if they have a half-day of school, they might need to change daycare, things at home and so forth. That's one of the reasons we wanted to talk about it upfront with this calendar and not, as you know, a couple of the last years, including the one that we're in, we've actually had to have, add a half-day in because it was necessary for us to meet a requirement. For example, the NIESC requirement here at the high school, we needed a half-day even just at the high school. To the, whenever we can, I'd rather be able to give parents nearly a year of notice that there might be a half, that there will be a half-day than to do it two months beforehand. So we thought it was best to bring it and have it set out in the calendar. And again, if you look at the, the way that they proceed forward, we were very thoughtful as we proposed which days they would be to try to choose days that didn't already fall at times when school is interrupted, the same week or the week, or the week before or after, to the extent that we could. But would also allow us to keep a continuation of those days going throughout the year. And I know that all of you sitting out there are trying to read that little tiny calendar in front of you. So for, for your sake also, I'll just point out when some of them are. So we're talking about the three days in August, and then we are, the next, the next one is October 18th, which is a Wednesday. Then we skip over November because that is a month that's disrupted already in the sense of Election Day. I'm saying on the half-days. So these are half-days only. We have the three full days, then we have the half-day on the 18th, and we have a full day on Election Day, as we always have. Then in December, which is actually exactly when we had to add the, the half-day this year into the calendar, the 13th. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we are eliminating the full day in January because we're utilizing that in August instead. So we have a half-day on the 10th. February, no half-day. March, no half-day because we are leaving the full day as it already existed. April, no half or a full day because we have April break. May 22nd. And then, of course, we're not going to disrupt June any further. So that May 22nd would be the last time that we had with faculty and staff.
So ignore the 23rd then.
Mr. Medic explained, on the printout, it looks like to us, it's a yellow versus the orange.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm saying, what 23rd?
Because it looks yellow to us.
Okay. Gotcha.
So is that a school event, though?
Yeah, it's the-
It's not listed.
It's a listed, so Mr. Medic thought it may have been the end of the semester.
Yes. So we have that date there initially. We just, that orange date, thank you for pointing that out. We have to still determine when that's going to be, but we typically put the midterm point on the calendar, just so the parents are aware of when it is. And right now, we are holding that 23rd just for that reason. You know, Christine, just not to cause confusion, just un-orange that we can take, just take the coloring off so that it's clear that it doesn't coincide with any of the other days. And when we publish this, we'll have, we'll have that date by then. And again, it's, it's important just in terms of planning. It doesn't mean there isn't school or the like. Sorry, you know, I'm looking at a different copy in front of me, so thank you for pointing that out.
Lynn, you had a question?
Yeah. I, I think it's great that you're adding. I, I think it makes so much sense to add half-days. I'm assuming that principals also had input regarding which times of the year, you know, what dates were chosen?
Yes. We share the calendar with them. For feedback also, yes.
Thank you.
I had a question about the January 10th. Was there consideration to have the Friday, the 12th, be a half-day? Again, thinking of parents taking time off work, long weekend, this way they have, versus a Wednesday in the middle of the week and then just a-
I mean, I mean, I mean this in a, in exact, in the positive way that I say this. You, you, you work in a, you work in a school. The 12th, the 12th is the Friday before the Martin Luther King holiday on the Monday. And if it were a half-day, I could, we did have this conversation, actually, and I think we could project forward that we might see a pretty high absentee rate, both internally and potentially in terms of students. So we thought that was probably, we did think about it because on the flip side, if you are a parent or a student, you say, we want to go skiing this weekend. Great, the kids have a half-day. We're, we're going to do that. So we, we did think about it for that reason and, to your point, for the disruption of it. But one of the things we also are thinking about is pragmatically and, and what that looks like, even, and even for the, for the, for the faculty and staff when we're talking about, you know, a Friday afternoon is just, it's just not the ideal time, I think, that people want to engage in new, new learning. I, I'm, again, I'm, I'm just being honest. We want to make sure they're very well-used and productive days that also are the least amount of disruption possible. And one of the other things I think, I should mention about them being Wednesday is, on Wednesdays, we can also adjust our schedule if need be because those are already our faculty meeting days by contract. And so when we need to, we can extend that time past the end of the regular school day for professional learning. So it actually gives us a little bit, our teachers, a little bit more time on that half-day than, than it would if we did it on a different day. So we are piggybacking on the fact that we already have meetings most Wednesday afternoons that run past the school day. So thank you for asking that question because it reminded me to, sometimes I forget what, you know, we live with every day versus what we talk about here.
All right. Any other questions or comments? So with the adjustment of September 15th, everything else is remaining, other than the last day of school?
Yes. So September 15th, we will be in session because Rosh Hashanah does not begin until sundown, and we will move back the tentative last day of school to June 7th.
Okay. You good? Okay. If that happens, right?
If that happened.
Yeah. So with those changes, I'll make the motion to approve the 2023, 2024 Avon Public Schools' calendar. Do I have a second? Second by Jackie. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. Now we're on to our second section of communication from the public. I'm not sure if anybody is interested. All right. Seeing none. Communication from Avon Board of Education members? Anyone on the board? All right. Motion to adjourn? Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second? Second by Liz. All in favor? Aye. We unanimously agree to adjourn at 8:17. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.